That's worrisome when I put my hand up without knowing it. All right. Can the councilors hear me? Okay, and we have, I see councillor Hazelton has just signed in, so we'll wait for him to be moved over. I know that councillor Bocheck advised not to wait for him. Okay. Welcome to the Township of Georgian Bay Committee of the Whole Meeting for Thursday, January 9th, 2025. And I'd like to call this mean to order at 2 o'clock. And in the spirit of reconciliation, we wish to acknowledge the enduring relationship between indigenous peoples and the territories that they traditionally occupied. We recognize and deeply appreciate the historic connection they have to this place. The land, the water, the sky, and all that live on, in, and above it. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet here, and we thank all the generations of indigenous peoples who've taken care of this place and who continue to care for it. And we want to show our respect. Hundreds of years after the first treaties were signed, they remain relevant today. May they guide our decisions and our actions. We commit to learn, to educate, to honor sacred places, and take actions towards real truth and reconciliation. Make which? Councilors, any declaration of pecuniary interest? All the heads are shaking, so I say there is none. I know we don't have any open forum because nobody signed up or appeared in the room. And for those curious, and you may be able to tell by the little window, the council chambers is empty except for the four of us who have signed in on line here. And we have five councilors as well signing online. And we're going to go to the solid waste consultant terms of reference review. CEO Mariotti, do you want to lead off this discussion for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor Cutie. If, if I understand correctly, we're, we're meeting today for council to come up with the details of the terms of reference so that staff can then forward those terms of reference details to, to the various engineering and consulting firms who may be interested in providing some, some assistance to the township. So if that's, if, I just wanted to confirm that that was the, that was the intent of the meeting.
That was certainly my understanding. The council approved a budget item for a consultant to assist us with moving forward on the solid waste collection challenges, if I can put it that way. And, and council asked for an opportunity to provide input into the terms of reference. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to council and asking if anyone wishes to initiate the conversation as to what you believe could, could be or should be included in terms of reference for possible consultant hiring, probably sometime in the not-too-distant future. Counsel. Councillor Cooper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. CEO Mariotti. I haven't drafted some fancy document, but would like to comment that given the solid waste issue and the fact that the most, one of the more complicated aspects of it due to some actions by the District of Muskoka is the water access world and the marinas is, is a primary concern. I realize there are other concerns, but I'm now speaking on behalf of boards two and four. It was working pretty well for many years, and the nonsense that's happened recently is, is simply that nonsense. And so I give that background because in order to be able to understand what is needed, we need somebody that understands the water access world in, in terms of solving part of this problem. We've had consultants brought in, one, two, or three years ago, who indicated to the District of Muskoka that it was a five-minute boat ride for these people to get to their marinas. Complete and utter nonsense. It may happen in Muskoka, but it generally doesn't happen in Georgian Bay. Even councillor Hazelton, who's in the doorstep, takes more than five minutes unless he really has it in the corner, which I doubt he has it in the corner all the time. So I think it's important for us to recognize the, the complications related to this and that, that aspect. So I, I do know from recruiting for other things on Georgian Bay, including the Georgian Bay Land Trust, we had some pretty big failures when we had people involved that didn't understand the water access world. And Georgian Bay Township is, is really very unique in North America, and I think we need to remember that. So if somebody's going to provide a, a sort of a reference of being similar because they're in Collingwood, I'm sorry, it's apples and oranges. So I'm throwing that out there. It's not making it easy in terms of finding somebody, but I think that should be at the, one of the, you know, there are other requirements, obviously, some understanding of the whole waste management world. But let's find somebody that understands what we're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hazelton, councillor Cooper is making reference to your high-speed boat runs, hopefully not through the speed zones.
No, I don't go fast through the speed zones. Oh, cobbles. I respect those speed zones. I can actually get faster down to the marina in my snowmobile than a Canada boat. Anyways, one of the things that I wanted to throw out here is this. We started off this journey because the district said they're going to cancel all the bin sites. But in fairness, we have a garbage problem in our township that expands, extends well beyond just the concept of bin and bin removal because that triggers all kinds of other things that are going on. We have heard, and the, and the consultant should be digging into these matters. We have heard from, from me saying that I, my estimate is that only about a third of the residents use curbside. We have heard from councillor Bocheck that only 25% of the people who are candidates for curbside use curbside, and they all use other, more convenient bin sites. And so I think what really needs to happen is the consultant needs to look at this more holistically and say, who is using what service and where today? And who might use what service tomorrow? Because the people who are candidates for roadside probably aren't going to go and invest $500 or $1,000 for a bear bin just so they can use roadside. So then the question is, if we have such a small number of people using roadside, curbside, the consultant should find out what the cost, the real cost is for that curbside pickup. So if only a third of the people are using curbside, and if you take all the numbers the district has for us and calculate what the true cost is of that curbside pickup per year, I think you're going to find it is mind-boggling expensive. And then we have the desire for people on private roads to be able to use the equivalent of curbside. And so these all fit into other categories of, of who has waste and where should that waste or could that waste go? And that's what the consultant needs to figure out because he needs to come up with a picture for the township. Because the conversations that I've had with James Steele, Cooper and I had a councillor Cooper, and I had a councillor, a come, a meeting with James Steele. And at the end of the meeting, James pretty much agreed that curbside pickup was probably not a good strategy because of the enormous costs to service 25 or 30% of the properties on each road. And so having a more available bin site service would certainly solve those problems. And when we start going down that path, then we start looking at what is possible for Go Home Lake and that Six Mile Lake transfer site that we currently have? And what could we do with those sites? And so I think absolutely key is the consultant needs to look well beyond simply bin site replacement because in fairness, we've talked about it for six years. We pretty much know how to solve the problem. And we have quotes that have been provided to the marinas, to a couple of the marinas, and they know what a private service would be. However, there is another factor that has kicked in here for marinas, and this may have a value to councillor Predko and Go Home Lake and the, the folks in Six Mile. And that is that there may be an opportunity for what we'll call an overlay company who would not be funded through the township, but would, could be coordinated through the township to get things kicked off. And this overlay company could in fact take responsibility for coordinating all of the bin sites in the township. Not just the marinas, but if you look at the number of marinas that the, the district picks up at today, it's about 10 or 12. But we've got about 16 or 18 marinas or marina-like operations in the township that could be all coordinated by a single waste company who would then subcontract out all the lifts. And we could get probably way better pricing than the district ever got. And the, the waste is then going outside of our township and outside of the district, and therefore we save massively on that waste not being dealt with by the district. So, you know, there is, there is a lot that the, the consultant could do to look at the township holistically and not simply from a bin site replacement perspective. And the second you start doing that, you start realizing, as I've already said, roadside is a problem, Go Home Lake and Six Mile Lake depots are a problem. But as James Steele has suggested, bag tags might actually be the solution for everybody. And if you had a custom depot for Go Home Lake, maybe because it's a special depot specifically for Go Home Lake, maybe there would be two, two bag tags per bag as opposed to what, say, a normal roadside pickup might be. So there's a whole lot of things that should be and could be researched so that we actually get value from this consultant to solve the waste management and recycling management problems of our township and not just the bin site replacement issue, which that's where we started. But if you make, if you do the math, you realize that the other, other areas are huge problems as well. I'll pause there.
Thank you. Other input? Councillor Jarvis, follow the councillor Predko, please.
Yeah, at the risk of repeating a bit of what councillor Hazelton has said, based on the, the group that I've been part of with councillor Predko, councillor Graziano, and in discussions with both, both the MOECP and Mr. Steele. I mean, originally, my impression was we had three issues here, three different ways of garbage being dispensed with the bin sites, curbside pickup, and then the, the transfer stations. And then all of a sudden, we add in this yachting haven concept, which was, boggles my mind. This all comes down to all of us, not just us, but all our constituents being better aware of how to handle garbage in the first place. And I think that is one of the biggest problems that the district really does need to deal with. So that's the core issue is the fact that stuff is not being thrown away the way it should be thrown away. Any of us that use bin sites see that evidence on a regular basis. Having said all that, I'm much in agreement with councillor Hazelton that the holistic approach from whoever we bring in here has got to be the best. They got to look at everything and somehow come up with an idea that really is, works across the board. But we, we can't sit there and go, well, curbside pickup is got to be, got to kept, kept in place because so few people, it seems, based on what I've heard from councillor Graziano and councillor Bocheck, is not, doesn't have the commitment to you, by users that it should have. So we've got to try and get that included, but dealt with efficiently. And it leaves, I mean, this leaves a lot on the table for any person, people we bring in to look at this. But I think the whole thing has got to be really looked at from 10,000 feet and then tried to bring it all together. I don't know if that helps at all, but thanks.
Councillor Predko.
Yeah, and just to, I think, build on what both councillors Hazelton and Jarvis have said. I, I think this is something that needs to be built on. And I think one of the things that will be important for this RFP to include is the public consultation. So we've talked about these different areas and different needs. But I think if we could get them to talk to the cottage associations, even talk to the road associations and some of the other community groups for places like Port Severn and Honey Harbor and Mac Tier. The, the feedback that I've heard from Mac Tier is, is that they do use the curbside and they would hate to see it go. So, you know, we may have different cultures in different parts of our township. So this will, this consultation obviously could be expensive. But I think if we're looking for something that is going to work long-term, we do need to make sure we've reached out. And people have had the opportunity to have their ideas and concerns heard because this is a big change that could be coming. And the thing that I think we've all become aware of as we've, we've studied waste management in our community is that we learn as we go. There's, you know, the preconceived ideas we had about a bin site has evolved enormously. And I think that we need to make sure that if a consultant is putting together a draft plan and a review, and a, and a report, that there has to be some check-ins early on to make sure that they are not missing learnings that we have and that they're really kind of their, their knowledge is aligned with what our knowledge is, especially on ECAs and the other aspects of collection that we have. Those would be important elements to me, and, and I don't know that we want to necessarily direct the outcome. But I think the, the input that councillor Hazelton and Jarvis have commented on would be important directions that we would need to, to give them in the RFP, but allow them to check in and validate what they have learned and what they're going to recommend. Thank you.
Based on this first round, I have a few comments. One is, we did a few years ago, go back with the, the so-called want and needs study and received a lot of input from a variety of residents. And I, and I found that exercise actually quite informative. And the varying attitudes, I don't know if that's the right word, but the approaches and understandings from different parts of our township. And I think one thing that adds to our challenges absolutely is we have some very different circumstances at this moment. And what I mean by that is, obviously, we have the water access folks in Georgian Bay who go through marinas. But we have water access only folks on Go Home Lake who don't go through marinas for their garbage collection. They're currently at bin sites. The, you know, the north end of Six Mile Lake uses a waste depot on a road. The, the south end, a lot of it is collected by roadside. Our urban centers have a different attitude towards roadside than our rural areas. I mean, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but I think that is absolutely one of the challenges that we have is that the different groups have quite different ideas and expectations. And, you know, if, if we think we're going to come up with a one-size-fits-all, we'd end up with a Lake of Bay's transfer station model full stop. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that, but that's, that's the one-size-fits-all. If we're going to go anything more custom or closer to where our residents want their, to dispose of their waste, it's going to have to be different strokes for different folks, as the expression goes. And I think that is one of our challenges. I, I think, as you brought up councillor Hazelton, and I don't know the answer, and I think it's a very good question. What percentage of curbside residents or roadside residents actually use and/or like the fact that they have roadside collection? One of the things that I remember surprised me six years ago when I first ran for this office is the number of people, when I say a number, I'm talking two or three. So obviously, I have no idea how representative they were, that, but they were insistent they hated roadside service, though they had it. And just because of timing. It'd be interesting to get those stats. You know, one of the things I find interesting is that we know that district has put in what they call lakeside pickup in, in other parts of the district where they, you know, park the garbage truck at the side of the lake for a certain period of time. If I understood the, the report that they produced on that from last year, they're only collecting at that roadside pickup, something in the range of 20-odd percent, maybe 25% at some sites of what they collected in the bins. That tells me that most people who, who could use that service are not. Doesn't seem like good investment in, from my perspective. The, so I, I think the good news is, as frustrating as it is that we've been working at this for, I think, five years now or, or more, is, is that I do think we're narrowing it down to some degree. The, the frustrating thing is that, you know, the MECP has not been terribly helpful to date. And even though we're, we're still nagging them and, and, because they have gotten, yet to explain why we should have two classes of marina users. And, but, so I'm going to get the, get the second round going. But I, I, what I do like about this is the, the conversation now is getting more. And okay, let's narrow down the questions that we need answered and the, and as councillor Cooper was making clear, the qualifications of the consultant that, that at the very least understands the challenges around the township. Over to councillor Hazelton, please.
Thank you. Previously, and by the way, it's six years we've been chasing this, not five. But previously, we have had a myopic view that district is the garbage solution, waste solution vehicle to solve our problems. And absolutely, the mandate of this consultant must be to think that the district might have a solution. But in fact, the district is not the dominant solution. In fact, the district is only one of many possible solutions. And that, that then breaks down the myopic view that we've had in the past and allows us to look going forward because we're not trying to invent a township solution. We are trying to take an initiative here that will result in a township solution. But we do not want the township to own the problem. We want the township to help facilitate the problem. So if that means the township helps to coordinate a private supplier and helps, helps that supplier stick handle their way to come up with a solution that is the best for our residents, that's what we should be doing. And one of the things that falls out of that is when we start, when we start realizing that we don't have to rely on district, then we can start thinking that, oh, maybe there is somebody that is almost at the edge of Go Home Lake that would be interested in operating a private bin service for Go Home Lake for a fee. And that fee would be way cheaper than the district could offer it. And that might solve the Go Home Lake problem. Same thing with Six Mile. And if that service was a part of a, call it a global waste management service, where we, let's think of it as an intermediary. We have this company that would contract with all of the marinas, the Go Home Lake, the Six Mile Lake people, and they in turn would operate or handle the relationships with a lift company. And the lift company could change from time to time. But that waste management service company would be kind of a, an intermediary layer. And that layer could then orchestrate a, a collective deal for all of our residents' needs. And yeah, in theory, that's what the district was supposed to be, supposed to be doing, but they have no interest in doing it. And we've also learned that when it's the district, they are going to be bound by MECP and private contractors appear to be not bound by MECP. And I can guarantee you that the private lift companies and a, an overlay waste service company will, will provide us or our collective businesses and residents a guarantee that they would offer this service because they carry all of the ECA characteristics as part of their business. There's, the, the district of Muskoka does not carry ECAs. The lift companies and these waste, waste management level companies also do that. And when we talk about roadside, you know, roadside is a challenging thing because we're all up here in cottage country and we go home on Sunday. Well, a lot of people go home on Sunday, and they don't want to leave their waste out until Wednesday or Thursday or Friday. Well, I can, I can offer that one of these waste service companies has already said, well, if we were able to do business in your township, we would guarantee Monday morning pickups for all roadside. Now that is a game changer. You're never going to get the district to guarantee roadside on Monday morning for all roadside possible pickups. So what I'm trying to get at here is the holistic approach. Take the barriers down, stop thinking that we are constrained by district and recognize that if we step, if, if we help coordinate and then step aside, we can have other companies coming in and doing the job that needs to be done and are being responsive to our residents and delivering a great service at a fraction of the cost. I'll pause there.
Thank you. CEO Mariotti, do you want to step in before I go, councillor Cooper?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, councillor Cooper. I won't be long. I, I just want to caution council that when we start introducing alternative contractors and private services, et cetera, that is something that the township will have to administer.
No, no, no. You can, any, any marina can go get a private bin service today, and the township doesn't play a role at all.
I, I understand that. However, when you start missing levels of service, and, and, and if, if you're only talking about marinas, councillor Hazelton, in, in this respect, I, I totally agree. I mean, the, neither the township nor the district has anything to do with, with, with what is, is going to be going on at, at the marinas soon enough. So it's a totally private arrangement between the marina and the patrons, and, and we have no involvement. But if we start looking at providing a service, let's say, at a central transfer station or, or private curbside pickup, that, that really is a municipal activity, if you like. Contracting out another private supplier that is outside of, of, of the district's supplier, we will either have to, the township will either have to engage more staff in administering that program. And I suspect that the district probably, you know, would not, would not entertain administering from their part, adding more resources to, to deal with another, with another private company. And in discussions that I've had with the district, it's either, as far as they're concerned, it's either all or nothing. That, that we can't really pick and choose what kind of service what kind of services we want to have in terms of we will, you know, we will pick up Joe Blow haulage, but we still want to use a transfer station. As, as far as I've been told, that is, that is not an option. However, again, have a chat with Commissioner Steele as to what the district is willing to, you know, work towards. But when we start talking about alternative private contractors dealing with municipal service, we are going to be adding township staff.
Counselor Cooper. You're muted, sir.
Sorry. A lot has been said since I first suggested that we find somebody that understands the area, and that was just sort of a, a passing comment. I, I did have a lot to say about all this, a lot of which has been said, so I try not to repeat it. But I think we do need to take a very broad 10,000-foot look. I, I don't think there's any question about that. And I, I've met with Commissioner Steele and along with Al and Hazleton recently, and he told me basically it's not an all or nothing. He told me that if we decide, you know, we want X services, we can acquire those services. We're buying services from them. We should be driving this bus. So I just want to make that clear. And if we have to hire a director of waste management to manage a private, private supplier, I would suggest to you that we should do that because we're probably going to save ourselves. We're now spending $2 million bucks. I think we could probably save at least half a million dollars and, and have a, a director of waste management. So, you know, it's just a, a guess on my part, but let's not put that out of the equation. It's a very viable opportunity to do things like that and let's do it. And, and contracting out work is what was basically the district does a lot of anyway. So we'd be doing the contracting out as opposed to them. What's the difference? But I'd like to also say that so of course, we're, we're trying to give some direction for a, a recruitment of a consultant on this. I, I do feel that we need to sort of align some things in pots, a, a sort of a solution, shall we say. One could be dealing with the district as it stands now and trying to work around that and including maybe privatizing the marinas. Secondly, it could be a double solution, one with the district and the township of Georgian Bay and maybe a hire of a waste management person. Or the hire of a waste management person and all of the services outsourced. And one of the things that we found out in terms of keeping our costs down, I think Counselor Hazleton found this more than once, is that our diversion costs are massive going over to Rose Warren because one, we're shipping our waste huge distances. And when in fact, a lot of it, especially if you think about the south end of Georgian Bay Township, could be heading down to, to the diversion sites in various areas between Port Severn and, and Barry. There are sites like that. And, and so we can, we can also do that. I think there, there also needs to be some thought given to fairness and equity. And what I mean by that is if we decide that there's a way that the township can provide all the services, and I'm not talking, now in this case, I'm talking about whereby the marinas are getting some sort of service, but not, not outsourcing it. Then I think it should be, the cost should be such that we're not, what shall I say, providing $2,000 worth of service for one resident and $200 of service for another. It's unfair. So we need to have some equity to make sure that we're not giving one sort of platinum service and somebody else lead service. So those are a few of my thoughts. And, and yes, we need to look at it from 10,000 feet. I completely agree and leave no stone unturned, including fully understanding that there are other municipalities that are privatizing parts of their waste management and we can do the same. And if we have to hire somebody, let's do it. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors Fredco and Jarvis, any comments before I go back to Counselor Hazleton?
No, I've already expressed my thoughts. I've, yeah, I'm happy to listen to Counselor Hazleton's second go around here.
Oh, Counselor Hazen, we're going to give him the third round. Go Counselor Hazleton.
Why, thank you. Committee of the whole is such a wonderful environment. We get to talk and talk and talk. So I've done a lot of math on this topic. I don't want to bore you with all the numbers, but I will tell you that again, Counselor Cooper and I met with James Steele on November the 7th, it seems like yesterday, but appears like it's over two months ago. And I presented him with some calculations and he looked at them and he said, yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. And one of the calculations was, what does it cost our taxpayers to deliver curbside pickup to a single resident? And if you take all of the numbers that James gave us and you add them all up and, and ensure that you're factoring things like 30% or one third of the properties are candidate, sorry, are one third of the candidates for pickup actually use it. It turns out that curbside costs over $1,000 per property per year. Mind boggling, but I will tell you that James corroborated that that is, that calculation was valid. Now, if you look at what is the costs for non-curbside in the township? Again, using James's numbers and getting him to corroborate the calculations, it was under $500. And that's based on the policies and practices we have today. So I would offer that if we're going to hire a consultant to dig into the issues in the township, the consultant, first of all, needs to understand how to get to those calculations, corroborate them with the district and give us a new pic, picture of what the real costs are for the waste services that we're providing. And, you know, if, yes, maybe there are some communities where there is a high uptake for curbside and maybe we service those communities and the district, James has indicated that he would, he would provide curbside for selected communities, but not this road, not the next, like not, not a scenario of, of roads, one, two, three, and four, where road one has it, road two doesn't, road three does, has it, road four doesn't. He wouldn't do that. But he would certainly entertain a request to have MacTire looked at as a community of roadside pickup, or maybe there's, you know, maybe Port Severn as a community of roads of curbside pickup. Because then they would just structure their model appropriately. And what he, he came up with, which I thought was brilliant. And it's clear that he has used this term before. He used the phrase pay as you throw. And I thought, well, what does that really mean? And his comment is bag tags. And if I'm delivering a service in a low-cost environment, let's say all of MacTire wants to have curbside, it's going to be a bag tag per bag. And if I have some low-income people in MacTire, I could actually give them bag tags to supplement them as low-income properties or persons. And so I could solve those financial inequities. But there may be other areas where I'm going to introduce a new custom service and that might take two, maybe three bag tags because of the cost of that new service or that new operation that I'm putting together. Now, these are not my ideas. These are ideas that have come from James Steele in his collaborative, cooperative, you know, ideas of working with us to find a solution to our problems. And yeah, maybe the formal communication they have with our staff are different, but he was definitely in a problem-solving mode with Counselor Cooper and me. And I think that we want a consultant to have that as a framework going forward that how can we create a consultative, cooperative, collaborative approach with the district? And maybe there are services that maybe they could offer, that would be good for our township instead of going to a third party. But maybe there aren't. Or maybe there's a mix. But we definitely need this consultant to think very differently than the approaches we've had in the past. Thank you.
So far, I'm hearing with this consultant, at the very least, A, has to be sensitive to the geographical realities of our township, including water access. B, be comfortable and capable of analyzing whatever data can be collected. And C, being creative. There you go, CEO Mary Odi. Those are, those are three of the, of the initial qualifications.
No problem at all.
Yeah, geographically aware and data capable and creative. Might, might mean that means these more often people who are very data capable aren't necessarily creative. So they might need to have two people on, 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 on the group. I don't know.
And, and he needs, and he needs to speak beyond the conversations that we've had to date formally. So that means he needs to be speaking to people outside of the district.
Outside the district, I mean, he, amongst other things, has to hear and what, what many of our residents are saying. And, and I think that's, you know, again, that, that the residents, what they say to some degree is informed by what part of the township, what geography that the, the resident faces. If I can, if I can phrase it that way, I'm sure it's a little bit awkward, but Counselor Hazleton?
So further on that, the previous consultant took the approach of, here are the solutions, which ones do you use? And, you know, as, as Counselor Cooper said, you know, the 10,000-foot level perspective, the, the, the terms of reference for this guy have to be that the consultant looks at the issue, looks and tries to understand the residents and then looks at and considers and asks about, well, would you use this? Would you use that? Et cetera. I mean, we've heard from Bocheck, very illuminating. Bocheck doesn't use curbside because it's more convenient for him to go down the street and use a, a bin service. He gets rid of the garbage immediately and doesn't have to ever worry about animals destroying his garbage at the foot of his driveway. Well, wait a minute, that, that is not a simple question of, well, you're a candidate for curbside, you're going to use it or not. It is if you had an access to a bin site that was really convenient, would you prefer to go to that? So what I'm trying to get at here is very lateral thinking, questioning and not like blinders on, this is what we have, have had to offer. So this is what we're going to talk about. No, we need to be thinking more creative than that.
I think we also have to understand. I don't know what the right phrase is, so I'm going to call it political reality. And that is whatever proposals we come up with are going to have to be sold to or bought by, if I can use the phrase, our residents. So they actually can be use whatever we come up with. I mean, I, I found it very interesting, for instance, that when we were doing our community meetings a couple of years ago, during that needs and wants study, how, how many folks were basically saying to us, they produce a lot more garbage than standard residential garbage. And so they liked the idea of putting some of it out on the, on the roadside and the balance they took to a bin nearby because there was no, I'll call it volume control. And that's one of the factors that we have to recognize. And then again, I think it's part of what the consultant has to consider, is that historically, our volumes per capita have been significantly higher than other portions of the district. And we know that there's at least a couple of contributing factors. One is because businesses are using residential services in effect. And two, we know that outsiders, not non-residents are taking advantage of our, of our bins. It'd be hard to quantify either of those, but they are a significant factor. And, and I think as we've pointed out before, a wonderful illustration of that is comparing the two neighboring marinas of Nautilus and the Boat Club. Where on a per dock basis, the Boat Club has sometimes something like three times the garbage. And I forgot what the factors, but something like that.
Yep.
And, and, and it's not because the people docking at the Boat Club are that much more wasteful than the ones docking at Nautilus, but rather the Boat Club bins are being accessed by road.
So Mayor, when we talk about lateral thinking and you've, you've touched on, on this topic, I guess the example you brought up is perfect. Everybody uses the Boat Club bins because they're available and there's no other bins nearby and available to use that are, are easily accessible. The, the Town Center in Honey Harbor used to have garbage bins, but the district took them away. And so what, what, what we think, what I think the consultant needs to be doing is back to this holistic approach. Where do we need waste pickup around the township? And if there is an ability for us to assist in the creation of a business model whereby all of the marinas could get picked up, but marinas aren't the, the only group. There's a bunch of other current marinas who currently don't have bin sites that are managed from the district, but I'm sure that they would love to have their own bin sites and they would be happy to pay for them if it was affordable. And there are other businesses like the Town Center and others where this, again, back to the holistic approach of waste in our township. And I know the Boat Club have already reached out to a private contractor to, to establish a private bin service for their Marina. And their strategy is to get rid of those big giant monster roll-off bins, which are only needed because of the volume of garbage coming in from outside. And if they just look at the small amount of garbage generated by the 150 slips, all they need is a few six cubic yard, yard bins and they would be locked up and, and the Boat Club would prevent other people from using it. Okay, so good news is they know how to solve their problem in operating, operating a private service. The bad news is the second that they close that off to everybody else who's been using them, we have a garbage nightmare waiting to happen. And this is why I say it's got to be a holistic approach. We need to understand where the waste is coming from. We need to understand, for example, that the Town Center probably needs their own bins. There may be other places that need their own bins, whether they, you know, be commercial operators or whatever. And, and, you know, this is part of the solution. We need to find a solution and we don't need to be personally, I don't think the township needs to be a player in the solution, but I think we need to help define the solution and then hand off to either the district to look after some parts of it and private services to, to look after the other parts. I'll pause. You're on mute, Peter.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Cooper.
Thank you. Just to reinforce what was said by you, Mayor, and Counselor Hazleton, let's think about this and in terms of how those bins are being used at the Boat Club. I suggest that there's a lot going in there that shouldn't be, should be going to the transfer station. Guess what's happening in Lake Abay's? The businesses in Lake Abay's go to the transfer stations and take all that shrink wrap in the spring and they take whatever else and they go to the transfer station. If we create a different solution, we say, this is how you, Mr. Contractor or Mr. Marina, this is how you get rid of this garbage. You go to the transfer station. And we've got them. We're just not, we're not managing that aspect of it very well. So just throwing that out as a suggestion there, that's something else this consultant can think about is how can we make it accessible, but it's not going to be quite as easy as it is in driving up the hill to the Boat Club in Honey Harbor. Thank you.
Counselor Fredco.
Thank you. Just a very minor add-on point to the Honey Harbor Boat Club. You know, they also get campers going out to Bosley Island and elsewhere that are dumping their garbage. So that's part of the problem we have Go Home Lake and other areas where it's the campers. So as long as that's incorporated into That's part of the problem we have Go Home Lake and other areas where it's, uh, the campers. So as long as that's incorporated into the. Approach as you, you know, one of those stakeholders that uses our waste facilities, um, just wanted to make sure that was commented on. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, and, and I think it's, it's, it's important, uh, it's important for us to note when we're doing all this. Is that two, two things. One is we want a solution that is environmentally responsible. And that means we don't want to make it so inconvenient, difficult, or whatever we want to call it. That people would much rather throw the garbage out the window when they don't think anybody's looking. Versus taking it somewhere responsible. So I, I think that we have to take that into account. I also have to think, I think we have to. Recognize the opportu, one of the opportunities we have here is that. We pay more for our garbage than any other municipality in the district and probably many other municipalities elsewhere. You know, and one, only one significant reason, not the only reason, but one significant reason is because of the volume. And that is because people, many people are dumping garbage where in other jurisdictions, they'd have to pay for it. They'd have to pay for it either because they'd have their own bin that, that would, uh. And they would have a private contractor behind their business collecting their waste and, and trucking it off. Because municipalities do not have an obligation to collect non-residential waste. And, and, and secondly, um, you know, a lot of waste goes into our bins that should be taken to a transfer station and paid for. You know, the, the, uh. Too, too many people figure here, if you can take your waste and cut it down in a size that can fit through the hole of a bin. Then, well, you, it, it's cheaper to cut it up than it is to, uh, haul it to the transfer station. Well, that to me. We have to understand that our, our residents are financing, are funding. The disposal of waste of some of our contractors, businesses, what have you. By allowing that free access to waste disposal. Counselor Hazelton?
Thank you. I wanted to pick up on, uh, something you'd said earlier and, um. I, uh, what you're saying is true. We have a lot more waste in our township than other areas. And yes, there is abuse, uh, I think from contractors and from, uh, uh, we'll call them transients. Um, but I also want to highlight the fact that one of the factors on waste volume. That, uh, the district doesn't seem to get is that, uh, and our, our, our population stats prove this, you know, we've got, um. Uh, so, um, a winner population of, uh, what, 3,500, uh, 3,500 people? And, uh, we've got a summer population of two, almost 20,000. And what, what, what that really means is. That, uh, in the summer, uh, we have 20,000 people. Spread over the same number of properties, producing the waste that 20,000 people would. The district doesn't seem to want to care about that factor and they always whine about, well, you're only allowed two bags. Well, guess what? You know, if, and I've said this before, if somebody's in Cottagesheen and they're driving down to the marina and they just spent $50 on gas. Paying an extra eight ball, eight dollars to get rid of a third bag of garbage is a no-brainer. Um, and I'm sure, quite sure they would be able to do that or quite well prepared to do that. So that then brings us to the next step, which is, and councillor, uh, Predko brought this up, well, what about the campers? Well, in, uh, in the solution that we have been exploring for, um, private marinas. If I'm operating a private marina, um, I am, my customer base isn't just my slip customers. My customer base is anybody who wants to bring waste to my location and dispose of it. So a classic example, Woods Bay Marina, uh, and then we have Coutsey Lane. So all of the people in Coutsey Lane are going to want to stop in on their way out and drop their waste off at Woods Marina. And, uh, so now Woods has not just slip count customers. But all the neighboring, uh, properties up and down Coutsey Lane and anywhere else, and maybe people coming in from McCray Lake. And all of these people are all candidates to pay Woods Marina for a private waste service that they might operate. And the same can be said about any other marina as well. And so, uh, to councillor Predko's comment, if I have campers. And I have campers on Go Home Lake and let's say there is a custom, uh, waste depot that's put in for Go Home Lake. Um, then anybody can buy a bag tag. It doesn't matter have to be a cottager on Go Home Lake. It doesn't have to be a, a water access or even a road access cottager and go make it be a camper because comes on to Go Home Lake. And as long as they buy a bag tag, they could get rid of their garbage. And that is a structure that James Steele would endorse. So there are lots of potential here. Um, but you know, the, uh, the key. Well, I just get a little sensitive about, we are township of extreme waste generation. I would say we are not. But we have characteristics that, uh, we have just been talking about earlier, uh, where we have. Waste that should not be going into the bins. That is going into the bins because it's often unmonitored, especially at the boat club. And, uh, and now we get tarred with, uh, a bad image when in fact I don't think we have one. I'll pause.
CEO Mariotti.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Coutsey. I just want to clarify something, uh. If a, if a marina places bins on their private property for their private use. And for the use of their patrons, that's one thing. Uh, if a marina is going to place bins to be able to receive waste. From other members of the public and outside of the marina, then they would require an, an ECA. I, I just want to clarify that.
So I would beg to differ, and I think that's what our consultant will need to dig into. Because I can guarantee you that the lift companies I've been speaking about, when they operate a private bin service, for example, at Nautilus or any other marina. Their comment is, I don't care where their waste comes from, it's coming into the marina. And every boater is bringing waste in. It doesn't matter whether I walk down the street from a, a property. Uh, you know, 10 yards away or, you know, half a mile away, or whether I bring it in a boat. I'm collecting and assimilating waste and the waste management companies are very comfortable with this. And this, this overlay company that I've been speaking with or speaking about, uh, operates all across Ontario. They know this. Uh, this, this capability inside out and backwards. And it's private, it's not district. And they carry the ECAs, so it's a non-issue.
I, I, I just want to make sure that there aren't any expectations raised here because we have met with, with the MECP. And we can't simply set up waste sites. Anywhere to collect waste from anyone, because at that point, they, they need to be. Uh, that it becomes a waste disposal site and it requires. The approvals that are not, uh, related to the certain bins that are being placed there by the waste haulers. So. I, I, I think, I, I, I think we, I know we're going to go around in circles on this. And, and I totally agree. Let's have the consultant go and do, do the research and come back and confirm. Uh, what, what the options are for us that we can, that we can look at.
Key to my comments earlier are, the township is not setting this up. The township is helping to understand what the solution might be. And it would be a clear, clean handoff. To a third-party company with no future involvement, responsibility by the township. And there may be services that we can't do that way. And yes, that might be, uh, a criteria. Uh, that, uh, what you just said, Greg, is, um, may be relevant, but where it is a clear handoff. And we have no role in it. It is, it becomes a private matter. And where the private companies carry the ECAs to deliver their service.
Counselor Cooper.
I completely concur. It's sort of, here's the problem. If you ask MECP anything, they're going to tell you how they're going to manage you. So we don't ask them. We, we find out from private businesses that this is how they're managing all those marinas, for example, in Penetang and Midland. That's how they're working. They're working there. And, and they get, they have the rights, they have the ECA to be able to do that. So, and some of those marinas are getting, uh, garbage from boat, live aboard boats that are there. From cottagers that come in, from campers that come in, and there you go. So. Uh, I, I'm sorry, but, uh, and, and I, we've had this discussion also with James Steele and, uh. He got it. So I just want to make sure that we are careful how we ask the question. If we sort of go to a consultant and say, is M O C P going to allow us to do this? We're going to get a certain answer. If we ask it a different way, we'll get a different answer. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
If we ask the waste company if they have an ECA to cover this kind of service and that they are not going to be in default, uh, with MECP. And we get an answer from the waste company saying, yes, you were fully covered because I have the controls. That is the question we need to ask. We don't need to ask, well, what about MECP? Well, exactly what Cooper, councillor Cooper just said. We ask the waste company if they have the authority to deliver this service so that it becomes an option for us.
I, I think there's a couple of other factors that, uh, that. We, we have to consider. And one is, you know. We need the consultant to be creative. And, and I think one of the ways that the township has actually been quite creative. Is taking advantage of something like the food cycler program because we know that a lot of waste that cottagers have brought in. Has been organics in those, in their bags of garbage because there was no, there was no organic collection of any sort. For many, something like a food cycler has reduced the amount that they have to put into their boat to carry to their marina. And so I, I think things, things like that, we also have to consider. The other challenge that we face and, and, um. I know that different areas are handling different ways is the changes in the recycling collection. And how, you know, it's been going producer responsible and they're collecting it in different ways, at different places. And, and I think the consultant has to take that into account as well. We're not just talking bags of garbage, but we're also talking bags of. Plastics and papers and all that sort of stuff that, uh, um, I think most of us would have rather see recycled than just thrown into a waste pit.
Key on that topic is that is not something that would go to the district. That is something that goes to this, uh, whatever that name company, I've forgotten it off the top of my head. Um, and the, uh, the, the requirement of a, uh, of a consultant is to. Understand how the material is collected and taken to that recycling company depot. Which is either in Arilia or Barry. Um, and for a marina, it would be simply whoever's doing the bin lifts for waste. Would do the bin lifts for recycling material and take it to that location. Um, the district doesn't want it and they have, they don't have the responsibility for it, um, after, uh, 2025.
All right, we have spent an hour talking about this. I'll get to you in a moment, Counsel Cooper. We have spent an hour talking about this. I think we've given, um. The CEO Mariotti's some. Qualifications that we want, uh, included in any RFP. But I, I don't want us to keep going in circles. So let's see if we can sort of try to wrap this up. Counselor Cooper.
I'm only here for a few minutes.
Oh, you're muted, sir.
Sorry, this is a wrap-up comment.
All right.
Is this, is this being recorded?
Yes, I, I, I see a head nod beside me.
That's a really good thing because I would suggest that the consultant, potential consultant, get a recording of this. There's a lot of information available in this recording.
Oh, and at the same time, uh, I, I note that both, uh, our clerk and, and our CEO have been taking. Notes as well, but you're right, the recording, uh, add a lot of color to those notes.
And I would, further to that, I would just suggest that there are people like councillor Hazelton have done a ton of work. Have all sorts of tables and all sorts of information that would be hopefully helpful to the potential consultant. So I would add that into the list of background information as opposed to. Making this consultant go out and talk to each of us separately over and over and over again, it would take forever. We've already got a lot of this down. So there we go. Thank you.
Counselor Hazelton.
I have a question to our clerk. But she, um, so. I, I sent you an email about, uh, an AI feature of, uh, Zoom to transcribe. Um, meeting minutes from Zoom automatically. Uh, first of all, are you aware of that feature? And second of all, do we have access to that feature?
Um, I'm assuming you're asking. The relevance to this conversation to see if it could have captured today's discussion. Otherwise, this is a completely different topic. Um, yes, I am aware of the feature. No, we do not have the feature. It has been disabled because the data is not stored within Canada. That's the short answer.
Okay, so, um, let me, uh, highlight a couple of things. Um, sadly, we weren't, we aren't able to take advantage of it here. Um, but, um, there are technologies that allow you to record this separately, like, first of all. Zoom isn't recorded in Canada, is it?
Zoom has an option that we can keep the data that is recorded on our own direct servers.
It goes out to YouTube, so is YouTube in Canada?
I would have to confirm that one.
I, I, I would suggest not, but anyways, the point I'm getting to here is this. Um, you could get an application for, for, in heartbeat to record these meetings. And it have it recorded on your computer. And then you could pipe that through a service that would provide a full transcript. Including speakers. So that everything was automated, fully transcribed, and you wouldn't have to listen to. An hour or more of stuff. You could start reading and jump around it. These are technologies that are readily available. And I will offer that the Georgian Bay Association is already using these things to great value. And, uh, if we have, I suspect that YouTube doesn't store this information in Canada. So I suspect that the storage in Canada issue should be moot. And that we should aggressively move forward with technologies that will help each and every one of us. Get better access to the value of things that have been discussed in a meeting.
All right. So at this point, we, we've had a good hour plus long discussion and all this. Uh, lots of notes have been taken, taking place. I'm going to ask whether there's any sort of motions that we should. Have other than to say that staff consider all comments made and then, and this will then have. You know, we have to report this to council, do we not? So our clerk is busy drafting a appropriate motion.
And while she, while she does that, I'll just offer one other tidbit on this. You don't really have to record the video. All you need to do is record the audio and then pipe it into a transcription, transcription service. That will generate the text so that you can easily scroll through it and find, uh, key important, uh, care, set, uh, uh, information. So, um. When you start realizing that it's audio only as opposed to video, it's tiny files compared to monster files.
I have moved by councillor Hazelton, seconded by councillor Predko. Be it resolved that staff consider comments made during the waste management consultant terms of reference discussion. All those in favor? And that is carried. Then, if I can separate the piece of paper. Moved by councillor Jarvis, seconded by councillor Graziano. I see he has joined us. Be it resolved, the committee hold is now adjourned at eight minutes after three. For 3:08 PM to reconvene on February 4th, 2025, or at the call of the chair. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you very much, everyone, for the, uh, I think, in my opinion anyway, very positive. Conversation and with lots of, uh. Interesting input.
Good luck, Greg.
And I thank you. Y'all, y'all have a good evening now.
Likewise. Thank you, Mayor. Greg, it's a piece of cake. No problem, right?
He's already gone.
We're getting through the waste, though.
Yep, it's, it's already, it's already in the mail. Thanks very much. Yep, it's, it's already, it's already in the mail. Thanks very much.